Jerry, would note that Planning Commissioner is missing, or Jim, who gave us notice, Barb, we're not sure of. And that County Commissioner Farby is representing the County Board today. Item one, and for the audience, if you haven't already grabbed one, there's agendas in the back bookcases if you'd like to. Yeah. Jerry, I guess if you could correct that, but we're busy, so. If you ever a chance to get seated.
Thank you.
Approval of the May eleventh, twenty fifteen minutes. It's in our packets. Did anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval of the May eleventh minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of agenda. And Commissioner Farby pointed out to me that we've been probably handling it a little bit different, but we'll approve the agenda and then remove consent items after approval of agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that need to be modified or amended? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Then we'll go to the consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried to our approval of agenda. We'll go to the consent calendar to see what items that may be pulled. The following items may be placed on, or have been placed on consent calendar for action taken by all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed by the consent calendar, by the Planning Commissioners, staff member, audience member, for separate consideration. The finding of the Planning Commissioner, recommendations of the County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision except on conditional use permits. With that, we'll first go to the Planning Commission. Any items on the consent calendar three through nine that are requesting to be pulled for separate consideration?
Number seven, please.
Seven? Any other items from the Planning Commission? Any others from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Then PJ, if you could read items three through six and eight, nine for the record, and then we'll go to the audience.
PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Item number three, conditional use permit review ninety-eight oh seven for Steve Hobart to review the manufacture of calving farms as a home occupation in general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of extension of conditional use permit ninety-eight oh seven with nine conditions. Item number four, conditional use permit review oh eight forty-eight, Spring Creek Premier property, Cody Shad, Pat Hall is the owner, to review accessory structures, garage and a pump house without a primary structure in a limited agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of the conditional use permit oh eight forty-eight with nine conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review fourteen oh six for Dakota Time LLC, Julie Smorgowicz is the agent, to review a recreational resort to allow up to ten seasonal rental cabins, a manager's residence, a maintenance shop, and a kitchen on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of the conditional use permit fourteen oh six with twenty conditions. Item number six, planned unit development review oh two oh four for Deerfold Park condominiums, to review an existing planned unit development in accordance with section two thirteen. Staff recommends to continue the review of planned unit development oh two oh four to the June twenty-second Planning Commission meeting. Item number eight, minor plat fifteen twelve and subdivision regulation variance fifteen oh six for Roland and Laura Willard, Davis Engineering is the agent, to create lots twelve R revised and lot thirteen of Forest View addition, and to waive plating requirements in accordance with section four hundred point three and seven hundred point one. Staff recommends to continue minor plat fifteen twelve and subdivision regulation variance fifteen oh six to the June eighth, two thousand and fifteen Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine, rezone fifteen oh six and comprehensive plan amendment fifteen oh six for Roland and Laura Willard, Davis Engineering is the agent, to rezone two point five acres from general agriculture district to suburban residential district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone fifteen oh five and comprehensive plan amendment fifteen oh six to the June eighth Planning Commission meeting. Would that, should that be fifteen oh six? And fifteen oh six? For number nine? The top says fifteen oh six and fifteen oh six, the recommendation is fifteen oh five and fifteen oh six. Oh six, oh six? Okay.
Thank you for that correction. The end for the audience. When we approved the consent calendars with the items by a single vote, as read by PJ, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to pull any of the items three through six, eight, or nine? Hearing none, I'd approve, entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar as read.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That will take us to item seven.
Item seven is minor plat fifteen ten, to create lot C one and C two of WM subdivision. The applicant and owner are Gordon and Carmen Abernathy. The agent fits land surveying, and the agent is in the audience today. The lot size is currently three point five acres and existing land use is residential. Are there any specific questions?
Yes, I'm just curious why this is a minor plat and not, didn't go to preliminary plat.
It went through layout already.
So, can you explain the process?
Sure. There's a layout which they submit, and it's basically, what would I need to do to get to the next step?
Right.
And that's kind of a prelim, that, there's, then there's a preliminary, there's minors, and then there's also finals. There's a three-step process, there's also a two-step process. And a lot of time, finals and minors are used together. This has got, this has gone through the layout plat. They've met all the requirements of the layout plat that were recommended, and now they're doing a minor, the minor plat, and this will be the final step.
So why minor and not preliminary, I guess, is my basic question. I'm trying to, I can't.
I'm trying to think, yeah. Trying to go through and figure out, a good way to explain it to you. This is, the process has been done in the past, not saying it's good or bad, but they come in with the layout plat and ask, okay, here's what I want to do, what do you propose? And then it would go sometimes preliminary and then final. That's a three-step process, or you can do the minor plat, it's a one-step process. In the past, the office has done layouts to preliminaries to finals, or layouts to minors.
Okay.
My understanding or recollection is a lot of times when we do lot splits, it's a minor plat where it's an entire subdivision, then it would be, then go to preliminary and final.
Yeah, if it meets certain criteria, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I need to go back and review my subdivision regs.
And they, and they've met all the criteria and things that were set forward for the layout plat.
Okay.
Janelle, you're representing the, as the agent, is there come that you have?
Yes, I would just offer that.
If you want, just for the.
Okay, sorry. Janelle Fink with fiscal land surveying, here on behalf of Gordon and Carmen Abernathy. And I would just point out to your question that when we have the option of the minor plat process, and all of the issues have been identified during the layout and addressed, it's a quicker step, it's a more expedient process to be allowed to just go to minor plat since there are no subdivision improvements that are needed or anything else to be addressed. So it saves a lot of time and additional expense as well for, for the applicants to be able to go to that minor plat process.
Okay, thanks, Janelle.
You bet.
So staff recommends approval of minor plat fifteen tell ten with one condition.
I will make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Take us to the regular agenda, item ten.
Good morning, Councilor Raj, Planning Commission. I have agenda item number ten. We just wanted to, for planned unit development review oh six oh seven, to allow a mobile home park in accordance with section two thirteen.
Do you want to maybe wait till it's hard hearing you, or maybe speaking to the mic a little louder?
Let's see.
Thanks.
Okay. Planning development oh six oh seven, we just wanted to bring this back in front of you just to verify the conditions. We've had some confusion, so we just wanted to bring this up. And if there's anything else that you wanted to change, we can do that now, or if you want to keep it how it is, we can just approve it and. And some confusion for conditions number four and five, so.
Mr. Chair.
Karen.
When this came up last time, I made the motion and then wanted to amend it and thought that we had voted on something entirely different from what came into the minutes. So I will ask the rest of the commission what they think. If, if I remember correctly, our discussion was that on condition number five, as it is in the, in the minutes here and in the agenda item, number five reads that decks and/or porches be allowed with a building permit as accessory structures to each mobile home. And I recollect that we talked about defining those as living spaces only if they're enclosed and have roofs. So I would recommend that we change condition number five to say that decks and/or porches be allowed with a building permit as accessory structures to each mobile home, and are not considered living spaces unless they are enclosed and have roofs. Because I, I agree with you. We talked about changing the definition, correct?
Yes.
In the ordinance?
Yes.
Well, I thought the other thing that was, when we had that discussion, was also on the, if the decks and porches have to, are included in the twenty-foot minimum space. And by this, I'm not sure that's been clarified yet either.
Right.
Because my understanding is that the twenty-foot separation doesn't include the decks, correct?
Right, only if it's a living space, correct? If it's enclosed and.
And I think it'd be good to clarify that in condition four, that the twenty-foot separation is.
To living spaces.
Applies to the living space. Would be my suggestion. Because I thought that was part of the discussion when we had that.
Yeah, right.
What, why we're trying to find whether it's covered or enclosed.
If you go to the next page to the final ones.
Oh, that, I missed it, okay.
It does. Twenty-foot separation between living spaces.
Oh, sorry.
So I think that one's.
I was on the wrong page, so, apologize, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the extension of PUD oh six oh seven with the twenty conditions, number five being modified. Do you want me to read it again?
No, I got it.
Okay, being modified.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second for approval with the modification to condition five to define the decks and porches not being living spaces by not being covered or enclosed. Any further discussion?
No, Mr. Chair, I've got a question on condition number seven. It says, ten-foot rear yard and side yard setback from interior lot lines. Are there interior lot lines in a mobile home park?
Not in this specific mobile home park, no.
So then why the ten-foot side yard? Presumably the side yard is the twenty-foot separation. In other words, is seven already needed, except for rear yard?
This is a condition that has been in this, for this pla, this PUD since forever. I don't know why the, why that's worded how it is.
I assume that, I mean, it's probably not a legal platted lot, but there is some definition of the rented space. I'm not sure, it's maybe just clearing up the terminology.
But if you look at this, there's no, there's no interior lot lines. If this is the, if this is the actual layout.
Mm-hmm.
It shows, like you said, a rear, you know, it shows some rear lines and, you know, some easements or whatever for the roads and the parking spaces.
My point is, we throw conditions in, do we really need them? Are they just fillers? In this case, I don't think it's needed.
Well, it sounds like you should take out the side yard one because it doesn't apply here.
There might be one side yard over, when you're looking at this map, on this side over here, it looks like there's some mobile homes that go over the lot line there. That might be two separate lots. That might be the issue.
Oh, yeah, it looks over here that there, there are some.
Can pull it up on Rapid Map.
West end.
Oh, there it is. Let's see. It's only showing one lot line. Okay, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I suppose it's specific to a mobile home. When I was going through college, I lived in a mobile home park, and I mean, you, you had the, the lot space you're rented was clearly defined, but not by a platted lot, but I mean.
Yeah, that could be.
So how's it defined then?
They give you a map and they had the actual.
They have actual.
Dimensions. They had pins.
Yeah, I think they, most of the time they have pins.
But it wasn't a platted lot. It was just a, set up by the mobile homeowner. PJ, would.
Can you bring that main thing back up in?
Do you have suggested language, I guess, on?
Well, I would keep most of the condition seven in because there are existing lot lines to the mobile home park, and to keep the setbacks to those lot lines. So if we reword it, so that there is a ten-foot setback for all lot lines.
Well, that would be.
But just ten foot from interior lot lines?
Yeah, because there are lot lines on the property.
Okay.
You'll be okay with that?
Exterior property lines, twenty-five feet from exterior.
All right.
So you're saying drop interior. All lot lines.
Hold on one second. We can keep number six because it seems to override number seven.
Yeah.
It's actually more restrictive. From your review with the number seven, would number six be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does the motion maker and second wish to modify the motion?
To remove condition number seven completely, is that the recommendation from staff?
You good with that?
I think we want to maintain, you know, if, if there's already, there's thirty feet between two mobile homes. If somebody adds, let's see, ten feet onto the edge, you want to make sure that both mobile homes have the, the same amount of side yard. So I think that's what, what they're meaning between the ten foot between side property lines. That's kind of what I'm.
But I think Commissioner Farby has a good point. That's not a platted lot line. And, I mean, it's really become the civil matter between the, you know, the, the trailers and the operator of the mobile home court to enforce where that imaginary lot line is. But it's not a legal lot line that, and I.
The covenant.
Yeah, it's more like a covenant that we can't enforce either, so.
We can enforce the PUD.
Right.
Maybe it's best with this, with this proposed change that it be continued, and we get the input from people that live there or manage the property prior to making this change or deletion.
I'd make a substitute motion to do just what Director Conover said.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second for a substitute motion to continue this, to get input from the mobile home operator. Any further discussion?
I mean, basically what they want you to do is center it on the lot, right? That's the intent. They want you to center the home on the lot, right?
Well.
So you don't.
We don't know, at this point, we don't even know the lot dimensions to know to center, so.
Even enforce that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to be real careful because somebody could just start building decks and decks and decks right up to the next mobile home if they want to.
Can I get a date? There's June eighth or June twenty-second?
This is a new owner, so it may take me a while to get a hold of the new people, so I would suggest maybe a month.
June twenty-second? Okay, continue.
That mushroom.
That's fine.
Where are you? Find it out.
Yeah, sure.
Your second here.
Sure.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on continuing? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item eleven.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstad, Assistant Planning Director. Item number eleven is minor plat fifteen eleven and subdivision regulations variance fifteen oh five. See if I can get this pulled up here for you. For Bill and Nancy Ewing, Davis Engineering is the agent. The current land use of this property is vacant. Minor plat request fifteen eleven is simply for the applicants to reconfigure the existing lot line between lot A and lot B of Ewing Addition, in order to create lot AR and lot BR of Ewing Addition. The existing conditions, lot A of Ewing Addition is zoned suburban residential district. It's one point three-three acres, it's vacant of any structures. Access is off of Forest Road. A large portion of this property does lie within either the five-hundred-year floodplain or the one-hundred-year floodplain. Lot B of Ewing Addition is also zoned suburban residential district. It is zero point eight-four acres, also vacant of any structures. Access to lot B, which is this smaller lot up here as it currently exists right now, access to this would be off of a forty-foot wide dedicated private access easement across lot A. It comes approximately through right here according to the plat. And this entire lot is also within either the five-hundred-year floodplain or the one-hundred-year floodplain. The proposed lots that they are wanting to create, lot AR of Ewing Addition would be this lot over here. This blue line right here is the existing lot line. The red lot, or the red line is the proposed new lot line, so they're just reconfiguring it to kind of even out the size of both, of both properties. So lot AR of Ewing subdivision, which would be this lot over here, would still be zoned suburban residential. It would be one point zero five acres. Access would still be from Forest Road. Lot BR of Ewing Addition, which would be this western side over here, would still be zoned suburban residential. It would be one point one-two acres. This, access to this would also be taken from an access easement across lot AR, from what I understand. There is a shared approach off of Forest Road approximately right here that already exists. On September second, two thousand and fourteen, the Board of Commissioners approved a minor plat to create lot AR and lot BR as they exist today of Ewing Addition. On April twenty-eighth, the applicant applied for this minor plat to reconfigure the lot line to create proposed lot AR and BR. Staff did perform a site visit on May eighteenth and verify that there are no structures on the property. And access is off of Forest Road via a partially created access, which you can see right here. It's definitely not finished, but that is where access would, excuse me, would come from. This minor plat was routed through the interdepartmental review process, and no significant issues were raised during this request. As far as subdivision regulations variance request, SV fifteen oh five, the applicant is requesting to waive five subdivision regulation variances. The first one is road improvements to Forest Road, including a twenty-four-foot wide paved driving surface with curbs and sidewalks. Forest Road currently appears to be located within a fifty-to-sixty-foot wide right-of-way with a twenty-two-to-twenty-four-foot wide paved driving surface, but there are no curbs or sidewalks up there. The second regulation is dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road, including a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way. The applicant is requesting that this be reduced to allow a sixty-foot wide right-of-way instead. The third request is for dedication of a sixty-six-foot wide access easement across proposed lot AR, providing access to proposed lot BR. The applicant is requesting that this be reduced to allow a forty-foot wide access easement. The fourth one that they are requesting is road improvements for the access easement across proposed lot AR, including a twenty-four-foot wide paved driving surface with curbs and sidewalks. The access easement is intended to be used only as a private driveway to proposed lot BR. And the last one that they're requesting is to submit engineered road construction plans for all required road improvements. Just a little history on this, the same subdivision regulations variances were requested with the minor plat that was approved in, on September second, two thousand and fourteen. And according to the minutes from that meeting, the decision made on the subdivision regulations variances at that time was to deny a portion of subdivision regulations variance to waive the dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road and road improvements to the access easement, and to approve the portion of subdivision regulations variance to waive engineered road construction plans for all required road improvements, to waive road improvements for Forest Road, and to waive dedication of additional easement width for the access easements across, or across lot A, providing access to lot B. This was also routed through the interdepartmental review process. County Highway did state that they would not oppose requesting the variances. However, they would like to see the dedicating of a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way along Forest Road. So my recommendation for the subdivision regulations variance request would be to approve a portion of this subdivision regulations variance request, SV fifteen oh five, to waive road improvements to Forest Road, including a twenty-four-foot wide paved driving surface with curbs and sidewalks, dedication of a sixty-six-foot wide access easement across proposed lot AR, road improvements for the access easement, and engineered road construction plans. And based on comments received from County Highway, staff does recommend denial of the portion of subdivision regulations variance, SV fifteen oh five, to waive the dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road, including a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way. And staff does recommend approval of minor plat, PL fifteen eleven, with twelve conditions.
Let's take the subdivision variances. First, questions for Cassie or staff on the subdivision variances?
Can I ask a question?
All right.
Because it looks like there is a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way along Forest Road every, on every other lot, right?
Yes.
It looks like they just want to stay consistent with that.
Any other questions for staff? Agent is here. Do you wish to speak? Have anything?
Is that no glare to everybody?
If you, if you step up to the mic, please, huh? Thanks.
Ron Davis, Davis Engineering, yeah, we agree with everything that's going on there. The sixty-six-foot wide dedication's already happened on the previous plat we did in September. We dedicated and dimensioned all that stuff. So all we're doing basically on this one is changing the lot line from east-west to north-south.
I'm just more curiosity than any concern, but.
Why?
Why so quickly after you just got approval for the lot split?
He found a buyer that wants the lot the way we were configuring it. The guy across the road, Mr. McKee.
Okay.
Would like to buy that lot, and we had to move the line over so he can get his driveway in there and all that. So he was planning on selling them the way they were, and McKee wanted to buy the, the east half of it, so that's what we're doing. That's why it happened so quickly.
Like I said, not so much a concern, just, just curiosity, because it happened fairly quick after.
Yeah, it's kind of strange.
Other questions for the.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might, that, the Forest Service Road, that's the main drag through there, right? And, and when did you plat the extra footage for the?
August or September here, just last year, just, just recently.
So that happened some time ago, and it's still on here as dedicating additional right-of-way?
Yeah, I don't know why they're requesting additional right-of-way, but we've done it, so we don't, we agree with this because we've already done it, so we're not going to have to dedicate.
So they shouldn't be on here?
It doesn't hurt to be on there because we're, we're, we say previously dedicated on the new plat, of course, because we've platted it, so.
Now, based on.
It's minor, if you.
Yeah, County Highway says, they're denying that, they recommend to us denial of the variance because of this, there's not sixty-six feet. Well, there has been sixty-six feet for quite a while.
There has been.
So there's an error. Thank you.
Did the current application state that as a variance request, I guess?
Yes.
The sixty-six feet on Forest.
Yes.
So we do have to take action on that, even though it was previously platted?
Correct, yep. The, the subdivision regulations variance application that was received by the Planning Department does state waive sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way for Forest Road. So we have to put it in there.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, is there sixty-six feet there? You've dedicated the extra footage.
That's correct.
It's platted, registered, recorded upstairs.
Yep.
Staff comment, the applicant is requesting that this be reduced to allow a sixty-foot right, right-of-way. That's not true, correct? You're not requesting that any longer.
No.
But if I understood from staff, they, they did request that in the, in the, their application, it's a little. And with the replating, it could be undedicated.
That's why.
So I mean, if it was formally requested, I think there needs to be an action on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
We were requesting that, and they wouldn't give it to us, so we platted, we dedicated sixty-six feet.
Correct, it is on their, the subdivision regulations variance application that they submitted to the Planning Department. And it does specifically say waive sixty-six-foot right-of-way, right-of-way for Forest Road from. Road from Highway 44 to 60-foot wide. So we have to include it in the report because it was a formal request.
And more properly, the application should have been amended.
Probably, we shouldn't have put that on there, yeah.
Or updated the application, amended the application to reflect reality.
We could have, yeah, we could have. I don't know if you require that at this point in time or not.
Well, but with the replating, they could, if he got approval for it, he could take it back down to a lesser one. So I mean, to me, it's cleaner, it's, the application's in, it's published, and since it was requested, we should take action on it.
Yeah, and you're denying waiving it to 60 feet.
Right, which would leave it the same as it is.
Yeah, it's covered.
Getting in the same place, just going the hard way around.
Just a little hard way around, but we're getting there. We're ending up in the same place.
All right. Thank you.
Did we have a motion for, I entertain a motion for approval for staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question on condition number 11. That best management practice be implemented during construction. Any idea what that means, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, we're, that's on the minor plat. We're just adjusting subdivision variances.
Sorry, sorry.
George, any other comments?
No.
Hearing no other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Motion is carried. Now, recommendation on the minor plat. Staff's recommendation is for approval of minor plat. I guess, George, you had a comment there?
Yeah, number 11, here again, we put conditions in, and I don't know how many folks even actually look in detail and digest the conditions. And the point being is if they get approved and somebody comes along sometime later and says, hey, you're not doing that, well, I didn't know it was there. So we shouldn't put stuff in that isn't quite clear to the applicant. And to me, if I was the applicant, and as we said, the best management practice be implemented, I have no idea what that is. Does anybody?
PJ.
That's why this planning commission has, in the past, used a statement of understanding and has implemented it again, which is also down as condition 12. So the applicants come in, the conditions are explained to them. If they don't understand them, they're given the opportunity to have that brief. And then they sign the understanding that they will abide by and understand what all the conditions are.
And I guess, just to supplement that, I guess, DNR, the erosion control, basically addresses what the best management practices are under DNR standards.
There is some responsibility to the applicant.
Mr. Davis, you comfortable with that condition?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one change, though. Item number three says be improved to a 24-foot wide driving surface. Let's see, that's been waived, though, hasn't it? I'm trying to find out where, I'm kind of confused on where it says the access easement across, from the highway into the second lot, we want to, that, last time we did that, it was to be required to be 22-foot pavement, not 24.
Because it's a wave requirement to improve.
On the last plat. So we want to make sure we end up with, with the 22-foot wide instead of 24. You know where that's at in there? Thought I had it here, but this is kind of confusing.
The dimension's not on.
We waived the subdivision regulations, we waived the requirement to include, to require a 24-foot wide surface there. And then it says that, now, item three says that the access easement providing access to proposed Lot B be improved to 24-foot wide with curbs and sidewalks unless it's varied. Well, we've got the variance on that, I guess. So where does it say on the width of the driveway into there? You might want to include that someplace.
Now that you have the variance to waive that requirement, the requirement of the 24-foot wide paved driving surface, it's my understanding, and PJ, correct me if I'm wrong, that you can basically make it any width you want. There's no requirement on it anymore.
Oh, okay.
But there's nothing wrong with stating a width in the conditions.
Well, the reason we requested the waiving it from 24-foot wide is because we all agreed on 22 feet wide. We wanted 16 feet, and you guys wanted 22, so we agreed on 22. Just want to make sure that that's clear in here, that that's what we're doing.
So you want to put the dimension?
I mean, if we go with the way it is now, we could go put a 12-foot wide driveway in there, and that's not what we agreed upon, so...
Right, so you should put the dimension in the condition?
However you want to word that.
Yeah, we could either include it in condition number three, or we could even add a condition stating that, just so that we don't muddle condition number three and lose anything in it, we could potentially add a condition that states if the subdivision regulation variance is approved, waiving a 24-foot wide paved driving surface, that the driving surface for the access easement instead be 22 feet.
I guess I'm confused now. With the replat, is there even an access easement anymore?
Yes.
There is, okay. Yeah, if you could put up the plat again, maybe I'm missing it.
Right there, just to the right, I don't have anything to point with. Yeah, right there, just down a little farther to the left, right there, where the arrow is. That's an access.
Oh, okay, I missed that, okay.
It isn't shown. I guess that's the, that's the 500-year from the creek line. But right there is where the access easement, 40-foot wide access easement. It isn't shown on the plat, but it's, in the conditions, it's required to be shown on there, and that's where it is. That's where that existing driveway that she showed you going in there is, right there. We will have a 40-foot wide access easement there with 22-foot wide paved access into.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that clarification.
Yep.
I guess, Cassie, if you could review, then I guess, where we're at as far as on those...
My recommendation would be that we add an additional condition under condition number three, stating that with an approved subdivision regulations variance waiving the required 24-foot wide paved driving surface for the access easement, that the access easement be dedicated as a 40-foot wide right-of-way with a 22-foot wide paved driving surface.
We don't want to word it as a dedicated right-of-way, we want to word it as an access easement.
Okay.
It's not going to be dedicated.
Okay, so that if the subdivision regulations variance waiving the requirement of a 22-foot or 24-foot wide paved driving surface be approved, that the access easement be a 40-foot wide access easement with a 22-foot wide paved driving surface? Does that work?
It would.
Ryan, you good with that?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chair, clearly, they with curbs and sidewalks because it's included in the variance.
Yes.
Yes.
The not having curbs and sidewalks.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of minor plat, PL 1511, with 12 conditions, 13 conditions with the 13th condition following condition number three as stated by Ms. Bolstead.
Do I have a second?
It's okay.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 12.
Okay, item 12 is a conditional use permit request for Neil and Terry Faust. It is conditional use permit 1511 to allow the use of an existing residence as a temporary residence while building a new single-family residence. Again, the applicants are Neil and Terry Faust. The existing land use of this property is residential. So these applicants are requesting, as I said, to use an existing residence as a temporary residence while building a new single-family residence. Their existing residence right now is a shop with living quarters, and upon completion of the new single-family residence, the applicant has indicated that he will remove the living quarters and convert this existing residence back into a shop only. The existing conditions of this property are it is zoned low-density residential district. It's 18.09 acres. Access is off of Nemo Road. Currently, this lot contains a 2,900-square-foot shop with living quarters and a porch, a detached garage, a 16-by-12 barn, a 48-by-36 pole barn, and a 32-by-12 addition to this pole barn, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The back history of how this property got to be the way that it is, is on February 24th, 1992, there was a building permit that was approved for a single-family residence with an attached garage. The garage was constructed, but the single-family residence was not. The only thing that was done for the single-family residence at that time was the foundational walls were poured. As you can see right here, this is where the existing foundational walls are for that single-family residence. This is the existing garage. They were supposed to be attached, but as you can see, the garage was the only thing that was constructed at that time. On August 13th of 2014, the applicant submitted a building permit for a 2,900-square-foot shop with living quarters and a porch that had already been constructed on the property. This building permit was submitted after the shop had been completed, so the applicant did pay a penalty fee on that. The applicant has now come in and stated that he would like to proceed with his original plans to construct the single-family residence that he had anticipated in the first place. So a new building permit will be required for this new single-family residence, but he would like to use this existing foundation that he has already started. As I stated before, upon completion of this new single-family residence, the applicant has indicated that he will keep the existing shop, but he will remove the living quarters and convert it back into a shop use only. Removing the living quarters requires that the range oven be disconnected and removed from the structure, and that is a determination that was made by the state's attorney's office, to my understanding, quite some time ago, that the range slash oven is what determines living quarters. On May 18th, staff did perform a site visit and verified the existing structures on the property. Here is the detached garage. Here is the foundation for the single-family residence that he would like to build. This is the shop with living quarters, a side view of their shop with living quarters, and that's their barn. They also do have another smaller barn back over here, the 16-foot by 12-foot barn is back over there in the corner. This conditional use permit request was routed through the interdepartmental review process, and no significant issues were raised during that. So staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 1511 with eight conditions.
Questions for staff, Cass? Questions for Cassie? Is, no questions for staff? Is applicant here wishing to speak?
No, he's not.
Okay. Staff's recommendation is for approval with eight conditions. There's no comments? I entertain a motion of that effect? Make the motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. I guess, item 13.
Item 13 is conditional use permit 1510 to allow a home occupation on the subject property with no immediate family members reside, where no immediate family resides, to use the current detached garage for the purposes of buying, repairing, and selling vehicles, not to be intended a car lot in the suburban residential district. This has been before you a few times as a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment. Let me just get right here. So just real quick, the applicant resides in this house right here, owns this property, also owns this property, rents out the single-wide mobile home, which has a conditional use permit, which is reviewed on complaint basis only, and it has not received any complaints and therefore has not been reviewed. And this is the detached garage in question. The applicant has had a rezone comprehensive plans amendment denied without prejudice, and also requests to waive the fees for a conditional use permit application and a variance application. On April 28th, the applicant came in and applied for a variance to the zoning ordinance to allow a home occupation on a property in which a family resident does not reside. That was approved by the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting on May 19th. And if you want me to go into the whole history of this, there's a lot of it, but I'm getting down to the end of it, though. Staff recommends denial of conditional use permit 1510. However, if the planning commission chooses to approve conditional use permit 1510, staff recommends the following 15 conditions. And I'll note that condition number nine was added with the applicant's request.
Questions for PJ?
TJ, the basis for your recommendation is the fact that non-residency on the same property?
It goes against the order.
Even though he's got the waiver approved by the county commission?
We still disagree with it, correct.
Other questions for staff? Is applicant here wishing to speak?
Donald Krebs, and I can answer any questions. I think we've been through most everything before, but I can answer any questions that anybody has.
Questions for the applicant? Staff's recommendation is for denial, although they have suggested 15 conditions if we elect to move forward. Someone wish to venture a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the 15 conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 15-10 with 15 conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 14.
Item 14 is rezone 1502 and comprehensive plan amendment 1502 to rezone 151.36 acres from general agriculture district and light industrial district to general commercial district, and to amend the pending county comprehensive plan to change the future land use from limited agriculture district to general commercial. The applicant is not in the room. I have not received any word whether he would be here or not. Staff has recommended be continued in order for the applicant to clean up the property. Just a note, I was out on the property. After the staff report was final, the applicant has cleaned up the property as requested through the previous staff reports and as requested by the planning commission. However, since the applicant is not here, and I know there's a lot of questions, staff recommends to continue rezone 1502 and comprehensive plan amendment 1502 to the June 8th, 2015 planning commission meeting.
And I assume by the applicant not being here, that he assumed it was going to get continued, and that's probably why he didn't show. I mean, that's an assumption on my part, but I mean, he's been here every other time we've had.
He's missed one, too. He's missed them. And we did talk on Friday when I was out there.
And he expected continuation at that time.
It hadn't been changed at that time, yep.
Staff's recommendation is for continuance to...
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion?
For the June 8th, yes, please, for the rezone and the comprehensive plan amendment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor of continuing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Takes us back to our agenda. Item 15, county board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with planning commission's recommendation from April 27th, 2015, planning commission meeting, with the exception of rezone 1503 and comprehensive plan amendment 1503 for Mitch Morris, these two items were continued to the June 2nd, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. Instead of denied without prejudice, they were just continued.
Information only. Items from the public? Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
That's not the right date. It's June 8th, isn't it? It's not 2nd, it should be 8th.
No.
The county commission.
Board of Commissioners.
Oh, oh.
Gets confusing.
Wrong one, sorry.
Items from staff, Vacation Home Rental Committee.
Barbara, do you want to touch on it?
I can do it. Just a few points. We were going to have the health records pulled up so we could get a handle on how many vacation home rentals there are, which are not registered, but it was decided not to do that at this time because if the places were recognized, then the staff would be obligated to enforce. So that may happen later, but it's... So, uh, that may happen later, but it's not going to happen now. Um, it was noted that the only real issue is the SDR transfer of the CUP, but that is not the only issue that came up. We, we lost a member, Jeff Segrew, who had to withdraw. So, the commission has to, not the commission, but the commissioners have to appoint another member. And, uh, we have requested, um, another member to bring it to an uneven number, and also a substitute in case this comes up again. Uh, let's see. One point that came up that I thought would be of interest to you is what additional businesses can be include, uh, included with the VCR and the CUP? Can you limit the number of CUPs which can be applied for in any, any property? And, um, I'd never thought of that, but it is important to those especially who oppose the, um, vacation home rentals and SDRs, uh, because they can pile up. Um, let's see. Uh, it was, uh, one of the major things the committee was supposed to do was, uh, discern what the commissioners actually want the committee to do, and the discernment process said, uh, listening to the county commissioners discuss the issue, full review of it. So, it will be reviewed section by section. And then, uh, something that we've discussed here came up as an item of, uh, discussion just as a side issue, and are there any regulations on long-term rentals? And comparing those with the VHR? So, I'm sure that will come up again in the committee. About it for summary. I don't know if PJ has anything to add?
No, you got it pretty well. Uh, one thing I would add, though, is that with the loss of a committee member, what the V, VHR committee is looking to do is they're making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners of how to replace that person. Either, you know, bring in existing applicants that have existed from the prior advertising, or to reapply, uh, re-advertise for a new member and a substitute. Um, so those are going to go forward at the next commissioners' meeting. However, the VHR committee is still going to move forward as is.
I guess Barbara, PJ, I guess, I mean, was there, I'm just kind of curious, uh, from the committee itself, did they feel like there's specific points that needed to be reviewed? I mean, like you mentioned, you know, I think the big one's been the transfer, but I mean, like, was there agreement that every section needed to be stepped through?
That, they're gonna, they're gonna go through every section, but some of them will be breezed through.
Okay.
Because there's no, no need for change, probably. But each one will be gone through, and they'll, um, assign sections for each meeting. So, this committee could go on for a while.
I'm, I'm curious, the condition use permit that you brought up, I mean, you're saying it's a concern of people that in, uh, suburban residential, uh, of the CUPs, uh, how's that? I guess I'm not tying what the concern was by the committee, or?
You mean about multiple CUPs?
Yeah.
Well, for example, if you have a vacation home rental, and then there's an application to have a wedding, you know, wedding groups, reunion groups, or whatever. Oh, there, there could be, or a gift shop, you know, can we add a gift shop? Those are just examples that come to mind. And the other issue that came up is something that had, um, you know, we discussed very briefly here, and that is, um, if you form a corporation, how does that change it? And how does that change the transfer of the CUP? So, that will, I'm sure, be addressed at some point.
Yeah, we saw that on the Strata Bowl, and it does bring up some interesting.
Right.
Situations, so.
One thing was, uh, that was mentioned, and it was just mentioned as an aside, is that the CUP can, uh, require a name of an individual, even though, even when a corporation has been formed.
Appreciate the report, Barb.
Mr. Chair, we have one of the committee members sitting here. Did, did, you want to say anything, Joyce?
I didn't know if you were waiting for, for here or the public comment, but usually enlighten, enlighten us, though.
Joyce Segrew. I was just listening, actually. I came just to hear, uh, the comments at this part of the agenda. Um, I think Barb has reported pretty accurately what the committee, uh, is looking at. We did decide to do a complete review. That's what we understood we were to do, so that will take some time trying to expedite it, so we're given assignments and so forth. What I've picked up from the group, uh, is that, um, uh, the corporation, the idea of a corporation owning or getting the CUP is an issue, and we know that from previous discussion. Jeff Roller, uh, from the Strata Bowl area is the one who brought up, can you have business creep and just keep adding CUPs? The VHR stands alone, of course, but then can you just keep adding to that? So, that's where that came from. Um, the, um, the transfer will be, I think, an issue that we'll discuss again. I don't know that there's a lot of substance left there, but there may be. Uh, and then, of course, the SRD and covenants, that kind of thing came up. So, it's what you've all heard before. Uh, the only, uh, from the last committee is the corporation side, and then this business creep thing, they're sort of new to the group. But otherwise, it's pretty much what we've heard in the past. And hopefully, we don't, you know, reconstruct the whole thing and have all of the same discussion over again, that there's some decisions that have already been made and that kind of thing. But I think it's pretty, she described pretty much what went on. George was there. It's always interesting, so, as it is here, I always learn something, so.
How frequently do you guys meet?
Pardon?
How frequently do you meet?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay.
Uh, is there a set, I mean, like, this was the third Thursday, I know, because I have a standing.
No.
Conflict, is there a set day of the week, or, you know, week of the month that?
Not, not so far. Um, Charlie Johnson is the chair, and as I observe it, we're trying to meet when Charlie's available. So, uh, we did look at, uh, four weeks from last Thursday. He wasn't available, so we slipped an additional week. So, I would say no, we don't have a set day yet. Uh, we've decided we'll meet once a month. That, part of that came from me. I didn't see a big hurry. I remember Lindell Peterson saying, "Take your time," although I didn't see that on the tape that we reviewed the other day. But I clearly remember him saying that, and I think PJ concurred that he did say that. Um, it, as a committee member, it makes it much easier for me to meet once a month rather than once a week. And that's a lot of pressure, which we did last time for months, you know? And so, if, unless there's a big hurry about this, which really, the committee doesn't seem to be pushing hard on anything. Uh, one committee member made a comment at the last, not this meeting, but the meeting before, that she had hoped we would be done with this before the upcoming summer season. But I, you know, we're not making changes, I don't believe, that would have been in effect for the summer season anyway, so.
And I assume, just like last time, there'll be public hearings at some point, but I also assume it's too early in the process to be setting those two.
Yeah, if there's changes or whatever, of course.
Charlie really runs a good meeting. He is very aware of the legal problems and, and, um, conflicts of interest and all those things. So, he was a good choice to chair the committee.
Thank you, Joyce.
And I'd add, the important thing is, well, at least, more than one important thing, but it's very important that we get folks to come to the meeting and for their input. The committee is, I think, a very, very good committee. But they're just humans, too. So, the more input you have, the better product we can come up with. Thank you.
Can I come, may I comment on that? Um, Joyce Segrew again. I agree with George. Uh, we, um, we need input personally, and I brought this up at the last meeting, from those who are family-owned va- second homes or vacation home rentals. We have a lot of input from those who are actually in the business, uh, of vacation home rentals, where they're not family vacation homes, they're a business. And of course, that depends on what you want to read or, or believe. But we don't have input from family vacation homes. We have some who attend the meetings, who own houses that their families use. But it's not like, I think of the one in Pactola Heights that came before you, right after the CUP process came into place. And, uh, she'd bought the property, had actually added to it, didn't get the building permit. The neighbors were against it. Uh, it was eventually approved, and rightfully so. But that's a va- family vacation home, they use it for two or three, uh, weeks a year. It's rented out the rest of the time. That's the group. I don't know how the ordinance is affecting them. And it's hard to know who they are and to get their input. We've got plenty of input from those who run businesses, like Strata Bowl and Happy Trails. Uh, but this other group, and it really does impact them, and should, we're not hearing from, I don't think. So, maybe we can work on that. Maybe we can find some, like the lady at Pactola Heights. I'm really curious how she's doing after three years. She's still licensed by the State Department of Health, so she's still out there. And I wondered how it impacted her.
I assume some of the individual people that are, not businesses per se, are probably advertising on something like Airbnb or something like that. Is there, I don't know.
It, it could be. Now, I did not look to see if she's advertising that way. It could be.
I don't know if there's a way, sites like that, to, to reach some of these people, to get input?
And they have CUPs, I'm sure.
For?
Vacation home rental. Yeah. I'm, I'm sure she does. I mean, I would guess, she's licensed by the state, so I would guess that she has a CUP. I know she did. I know she did originally, and she should have been reviewed by now. That's, and, and that's in that area, that's the only one I know of.
Do you have a name?
Yeah, we can look it up.
Yes, uh, yeah, we've got the name.
I'm assuming some of the people you're trying to reach are people that maybe are out of town, not even aware of the rules, and, and they're running it, not realizing they're even in violation.
Yeah. I'm sure she's aware, because she went through the whole process, and, you know, had a hard lesson to learn, because she hadn't followed our business, or our, um, uh, building permit process. I think she's from Gregory or Winter, that area. Yeah, that name is out there, I saw it the other day, so I know that.
My, my understanding, we aren't trying to stop that, we're just trying to.
I want to.
Get input and get them involved in the process.
I want to know how it's working for them and for their neighbors who were opposed to it. You know, is it working now? Has it helped? That's my interest in it, not, you know, uh, is she following the rules necessarily? But is it helpful to everybody? That was the intent.
Mr. Chairman, since Joyce brought it up, too, this is a vacation home rental, not a vacation rental. And I wondered, what's the definition of home? And how do you divide that from the properties that really nobody's living in? They're being used as a business in spite of what the state says?
It's all a matter of definitions, isn't it, Kinsley? It's a matter of definitions, bed and breakfast, specialty resort, vacation homes, and on and on and on.
You know, the state has those definitions, we can pull those.
Maybe an agenda item.
Absolutely.
It's not clear.
Would that be all right?
Um, Barb, I think your concern comes definitely into play in suburban residential. That's, you know, where it probably impacts more people, and more people are concerned on defining that, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
One more item that's not on there, that we've added on before, so just... Uh, staff is looking at improving the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning ordinance, and we're going to have discussions and, uh, requesting some money to start that process again. Money was requested last year by previous director, and the commissioners had said no to that. But the staff is looking to do it again with, um, commissioner, uh, planning commission input, Board of Commissioners input, public input, go through that process. So, that is, uh, wouldn't probably start until after the new year, um, but we'd like to put it on as a discussion item for the next meeting. And if anybody has concerns about the, um, comprehensive plan and/or zoning ordinance and improvements you'd like to see made, uh, please bring those up as items for discussion.
Any other things from staff?
Nothing further.
Items from membership?
Could you clarify when we're having our meetings in December?
Sure. Should be updated.
I know we talked about having two meetings, and it wasn't on our.
Planning way ahead, aren't you?
It wasn't on our original agenda, I mean, our original calendar.
I don't think I have an updated calendar.
Because I know we just had one meeting, and then we talked about maybe not even having it on a Monday, and working around some other meetings here, so.
And there was discussion about also putting it in the evenings at some point, but that hasn't come back up again.
So, what are our dates?
That's what Jerry's going to pull up. The calendar I have doesn't have the new ones on them yet.
That's why I'm asking, because mine doesn't either.
Well, Jerry's looking that up. I guess, we're coming up in July on, I don't know who's up this year, or, uh, on the terms on. Reappointments. I don't know, is there an ad that's going to be placed soon?
There will be, yes.
Who is up this year?
Bill?
I think it's Bill and.
Jim?
Lauren. I think, yeah.
Okay.
Lauren, I think her up.
I go all the way back to January, I think.
Maybe we never decided.
That's what I'm.
You did.
Didn't we?
Yeah, I did.
I'm not sure about the twenty-first, though, that was the one I wasn't.
Right, now the calendar shows our meeting on the fourteenth, yeah.
See, I have one on the seventh at three-thirty, or three, or something.
Because the point of information.
And I wanted to make sure I knew the dates and times.
Seven and twenty-one sound right, but I want to hear from the minutes.
Last year.
Well, I think we, yeah, I didn't think we did on the twenty-first, because that's Christmas week, and that's.
See, I have it on the twenty-first, I have it on the twenty-first in the morning. And I have it on the seventh at three.
Yeah.
It can't be the twenty-first of December, because that's the county tax deed sale. It's always the third Monday in December. I, I have you guys in the afternoon on Monday, the twenty-first.
Yeah, that sounds right, because we had to move because of that.
Because of that sale.
Right.
So, I think you guys are starting it.
Yep.
I have three to seven, but I don't know if that was confirmed a hundred percent.
Expecting a lot of agenda items if it's still seven, so.
I'll have to go back through some other seven minutes.
Yeah, if you could.
Yeah.
Well, I think we got it here. So, moved by Litsin and seconded by Hall to schedule the Monday, December seventh, planning commission meeting at nine AM. And the Monday, December twenty-first, planning commission meeting will be left open at this time until the date nears to assess scheduling time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, for sure, we're on the seventh?
No meeting on the fourteenth.
And likely, three on the twenty-first of.
Later, probably.
Depending on the schedule, how many.
Yep. I had talked, now, memory's coming back for this one. I had talked to the treasurer about that, and she had said they expect to be done by noon, but no guarantees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items from membership?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I might, several meetings ago, you, you folks talked about, uh, changing the day of the meeting. Planning commission meeting is, is that completely dead, or, or do you want to revisit that issue? And as I recall, one of the discussions was not getting information until the weekend for a Monday meeting. And, uh, and I, and I guess that, when I heard a comment made, I guess I sure got in tune with it. And I don't know there's anything magic about, but Monday meeting, it's been doing it for years, but that doesn't mean it can't be changed.
Well, and I think I even brought up either, you know, it's hard to get the staff reports out earlier, but I, you know, either earlier or pushing the meeting back would maybe help on the public getting information, because we've heard that several times, where people are just getting that, you know, they're not aware that they need to show up Monday, and it's hard to schedule in the last minute. I guess, uh, I don't know if we took that discussion very far at that time, and.
No.
Do we want to put it on the agenda for next time for a more formal discussion of that?
If you'd like to.
Give it some more thought? I guess I'd like input from staff, I guess, as far as how that affects your normal routine on, if it does, and what would work best for staff if there's some changes, so.
More staff.
Yeah.
And then a second, uh, item for discussion is, how many of you folks have been, been out to see Mitch Morris's, uh, operation?
By there, yeah.
I... Looks to me like. It looks to me like that with the city being involved, it's probably going to be, I don't want to use the word messy, but probably a really good time for the, for the two bodies, the two entities, the county and the city, to get together before anything's ever decided and have a joint plan for, for that operation. To me, it's, I've, I've read the city's comments and I, I know Vicki Fisher, not well, but I do know her and I think she's got some really good comments about how we should proceed, it's in the county at this point, but it's in this three-mile plating area. And the more we can do ahead of time, I think the better off the outcome will be for, for everybody concerned.
And I agree with you there, because I brought up that several times, that, you know, I know Sioux Falls has a joint jurisdictional area for these gray areas, because, I mean, we had the same issue on Highway 44 where we had different zoning, city versus county, and I think, and then like I think on, right across from Fifth and Catherine, that, that was kind of same thing, is city plating jurisdiction, different zoning, I think the county board actually went with the city zoning on that versus the county comp plan, that kind of, to me ties into the comp plan needs updating and probably looking at, you know, if there isn't a joint jurisdictional, at least so are the comp plans are similar in that three-mile zoning.
Perfect timing, George.
Pardon me?
Perfect timing for your comment.
Well, it's, those, those issues are tough and I, and obviously, I don't think any, any one of us have an answer, but as, as a group, I think we could at least roll it over and roll it over until they come up with the best, the best outcome, and, and obviously, private property rights plays a role, but at the same time, this is, this goes beyond private property, is wanting to put a lot of houses out there.
Yeah, we're looking at.
And, and that's huge.
Big, big South Dakota community, actually.
Yeah, yeah, huge, and, and probably one of the things bothers me the most is road. Old Folsom Road, can you handle that kind of traffic?
Right.
Access off of 44 totally, I mean, off of 79, those issues need to be discussed before, in my opinion, before any decisions are made, before we give you many false promises of going forward, and, you know, all those, all those things need to be discussed.
Well, and I think I heard on the news yesterday, parts of Folsom Road were closed with flooding yesterday, and, you know, if that's the case, you know, are there other accesses or ways out too that should be looked at when you've got 2,400 homes, you know?
Wasn't there an accident too? Wasn't part of it closed because there was a truck overturned or something?
Yeah, I think right at that intersection, yeah.
I think so.
On 79, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the only way to get in and out of most of those places.
Yeah.
Because there's no access off of the connector.
But, but going forward, roads and water and sewer need to be addressed big time before any plans or any, any decisions are made.
Absolutely.
And, and the city obviously plays a big, big role in this.
Yeah.
It's not just a county matter, even though it's in a county at this point, at some time it'll probably be in, or it might be a separate city. But the county road, it's been a while since I've been on it, but it can't handle a lot of traffic, our highway superintendent is absolutely right about that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And just to further on that, for, that would be rezone 15 oh three and comp plan 15 oh three, the ones we're getting continued for exactly the reasons why Commissioner Farabee is saying is because the information was not provided to staff or the commissioners to make those decisions. I've had a meeting with Mr. Morris and also Commissioner Haddock, and Mr. Morris, and it's in a previous, other staff reports, but he basically apologized to staff and to the commissioner because of the information that was provided and information that was not provided, and the proposal of the 2,500 homes that he proposed is not what he's planning on doing, and he's coming back with a new proposal, and which is why it was continued from the Board of Commissioners meeting to their next meeting.
But even if it's half that, it's still a sizable South Dakota community.
Yeah, he's still, yeah, and he is aware he has a lot of explaining to do, yes.
But that, that is, that is, should be separate from what we're looking, looked at here, though, the commercial, rezoning that commercial doesn't, you know, I noticed in, in the agenda, the highway department's talking about old Folsom Road, okay, that is not a concern for the commercial development part.
Access off of 79, yeah.
So, we got to separate, got to think, okay, the, the commercial part is separate from the housing department section.
Well, I, I agree with you, because like even the city's comments saying it's addressing both and they're so different.
Yeah, they're, they're totally different animals, you need to.
Well, in fact, staff's recommendations for approval on general commercial, essentially.
Eventually.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, it's more in tune with the county's comp plan right now.
It is.
Even though it's in conflict with the city's.
He's met all the requirements and things that have been asked, basically, by the commissioners to provide information for the general commercial request. Since he's not here and you guys will probably have questions, while we continue.
Well, there was a word used years and years ago, systems approach, and, and I guess that's where I come from, is I, I don't want to see this thing piecemealed, and that's what I would consider, not that I'm disagreeing with you, but, but we ought to look at the entire situation before we make any decisions, and especially since the city is not in agreement. So, but the last thing we want to do is piecemeal it.
Well, sometimes I think with these areas that are in three-mile plating jurisdiction, either the applicant can use it to their advantage to kind of split the city-county or it can be just opposite, the applicant can be caught in the middle between the city and county and not even realize it, just, you know, and then it holds up his process, so, it's not fair to that applicant either, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you, PJ, he's, Mitch Morris is planning to sell part of this property, correct?
Which, which one?
The commercial?
He already has for sale signs up, he has two, at least, on the property when I was down there the other, the other week, and we have had requests in the office for lots that are for sale in the, in what he's proposed for the suburban residential rezone.
Okay, so do you think he's planning to sell the, you know, rezonate commercial because he can get more money for that land if it's zoned commercial, sell that and use the proceeds from that sale to develop the rest?
Not sure what his plan is, but we've had a few requests already in the office of people who want the lots in the commercial if it's rezoned, and they already have come forward with plans of what they want to do.
For commercial?
Yes.
Yep, we need to ask him some questions.
I figured.
Any other items from membership? Not entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you.